Welcome to the Town Manager Download, a podcast about local government and the town of Shrewsbury. I'm Kevin Mizikar, the Town Manager of the town of Shrewsbury, and as always, I'm joined by Communications Coordinator Taylor Galusha.
In today's episode, we're going to give an overview of the upcoming May 19th Annual Town Meeting, and the different items that will be discussed and voted on by the town's legislative body. Happy spring, summer, spring, summer.
Keeps bouncing back and forth. I'll take the summer feeling.
Yeah.
You got a summer vibe out there today?
Definitely.
What's been going on with you? Anything good?
Just busy. I feel like this time of year like goes by wicked fast. Like, I feel like I blinked and April was over. But yeah, I don't know. It's just been, work's been crazy. Life's been crazy, but all good things.
Good.
You know, I feel like town, like we always say, town meetings are Super Bowl, so.
We're getting close.
We're getting close and, um, you know, things are exciting at Town Hall.
Yeah, we had a successful outcome, I believe. I'm grateful for Town Meeting's support on April 14th to allow us to borrow for a DPW rehabilitation and Town Hall renovation project.
Yeah.
So that was a good outcome. Appreciated the questions that were asked of Town Meeting, Town Meeting members asked of us, and how the entire team handled those questions. And it was really overwhelming support in that room this evening, and now it goes off to a ballot question on the election of May 6th. So that would provide for the debt exclusion part, two parts in the process.
And what is a debt exclusion, just so you know?
So a debt exclusion allows us to raise real estate property taxes an amount equal to the debt service for a particular project. So it's a temporary increase in the total taxes that we raise for the specific purpose of paying off debt.
Gotcha.
So we do it on a project-by-project basis, which is a little unique. We could do it for a broader bond bill like we have in the past for water, although that wasn't an exclusion. But normally, because of the two-part process, getting a borrowing authorization at Town Meeting, and then having a particular question happen to be asked of the residents for the debt exclusion part, it's normally on a project-by-project basis. Again, it will increase taxes for the period of repayment of the debt, which in this case would, since it's a major project, would be 20 years.
Right, and we've kind of worked to align it with other debt rolling off, so.
Right.
Kind of planning and thinking ahead on that one.
Yeah, to mitigate the impact. So as debt is rolling off from prior projects, we are continuing to invest in our facilities and other capital improvement projects, and new debt would be rolling on. And it would still be a taxing increase, as we've talked about at Town Meeting for this project, but rather than being on the magnitude of $175 per year, the net impact would only be about 50. So we still need the $170 to pay it off, but because that other debt is rolling off, it would kind of keep things more.
Yeah, so that's good to know, and polls are open 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And if people need to look up their polling locations throughout town, they're on the Town Clerk's webpage for the annual town election, so.
It's a few days away.
Yeah, I know. Again, came out of nowhere, but, um, there are also some other great things going on in the Shrew the last couple of weeks. And right now, I feel like we had a great event for Arbor Day put on by Selco, and then the Town Cleanup Day hosted by the Recreation and Department and the Parks and Cemetery Maintenance Department. And despite the rainy weather, everyone came out to support wolf events, to help keep Shrewsbury beautiful. And then also in the realm of recreation, Dean Park has officially moved to its one-way traffic pattern. And none of that work would have been possible without the Parks and Cemetery Division of the DPW and the Highway Division. I think we got a lot of great feedback so far, and even before the switch happened. Again, just trying to create safer and more enjoyable environments for people wanting to leisurely walk around the park, run, walk their dogs, all those great things, so.
Another great change, you know, with the heightened activity that occurred, as in so many parks right after COVID. We definitely saw the need to look at things differently in the park, and we explored a couple of different options of mirroring a path around the sort of kind of the outside perimeter of the main area of the park to provide a safer space for pedestrians, but it seems like this is the much more feasible approach.
Cost-effective.
Very cost-effective in comparison to the other.
Sidewalks are very, very expensive.
Yes, so this will be a good approach, and appreciate everyone's work on that, and people's patience. Just still be on the lookout for cars. We know it's a major change. It's been like that for decades. And with the signage up and the new markings on the pavement, hopefully everyone will recognize that, but we need to give folks some time.
Yeah, just be careful, drive carefully, walk carefully. And then also, I guess there's just a lot of fun outdoor things. Like we said, happy summer slash spring. The Planning and Economic Development Department received a grant to kind of try out some different, they're called like place-making initiatives, so like creating public spaces within the outdoors that people can congregate and like hang out. So there's some very colorful and fun new chairs and tables on the Town Common right now. And they'll be moving at some point, so while they're there at the Town Common, make sure to check them out. The day I drove by them for the first time, I was like, oh, that's so cute, and I'm like excited to spend one of my Friday afternoons walking down there, get a library book and go hang out, so. Lots of fun things in Shrewsbury.
Good.
But not the fun, most fun. Town Meeting's the most fun. So let's talk about Town Meeting and maybe give a refresh of our special form of government here in Shrewsbury.
Sure, so we, of course, have a representative Town Meeting in Shrewsbury, which is different than open Town Meeting. Open Town Meeting in its traditional form in New England means that every registered voter, 18 years or older, had the opportunity to participate in the legislative function of the town and go to a Town Meeting and vote. And that was changed in Shrewsbury in 1953. Many other towns around that timeframe were also changing. As communities grew, 32 municipalities now have a representative Town Meeting, so it means that all registered voters vote for a certain number of elected representatives to serve in the legislative process at Town Meeting. And in Shrewsbury, we have 240 elected registered Town Meeting members. And those elections occur in May, with the election that we just talked about, that's coming up on May 6th. And there's several seats open from each precinct in a normal election cycle, and it gives individuals the opportunity to run and participate in the legislative body and legislative activities of the town of Shrewsbury.
Yeah, it's one of the easier, I feel like the representative Town Meeting's a little bit easier to explain to people that aren't familiar with the form, just because it mirrors so well like our state and federal government, where we're electing representatives to the House that represent our different counties and whatnot, so.
Quite different than a lot of other local governments around the country, though.
Right, but similar to those two.
You tell people you have 240 members on the legislative body, and they think of a traditional city council, they definitely scratch their head about that one, when a normal number would be, you know, seven or nine, or in the extreme, 11 or 13.
Yeah.
So obviously quite different with our key or primary elected body being the Select Board. It serves as the elected executive here in Shrewsbury. And we have the opportunity to engage with Town Meeting just a few times a year, which makes our budgeting process quite different, and in some ways more challenging than those who have a legislative body that meets much more regularly and is much smaller. But certainly a strong tradition for representative Town Meeting and Town Meeting in general here in Shrewsbury. And we're on that path, and when we only meet on a few occasions over the course of the year, that makes it truly our Super Bowl, as you said before, because we've got to pack a lot into that legislative agenda for that evening.
Have to get all our ducks in a row for any bylaw changes, even if it's just changing like a word or two and like she does.
Yes.
Like, you know what I mean? So it's like, all of that has to be thought out and kind of play ahead.
Yeah.
When it comes to planning for Town Meeting.
So that gives us a long horizon on getting to Town Meeting and a number of public hearings that we've already actually gotten through in the Town Meeting process. Some that are focused specifically on one of the key points of Town Meeting, which is the adoption of the fiscal year '26 budget and any changes to the current year, but then also those other traditional legislative powers, appropriating funds for a particular project, or setting spending threshold limits, or adopting new local bylaws, whether they're general bylaws or zoning bylaws. Those all go through a public hearing process, and the origination of the warrant, which was ultimately signed by the Select Board in late March, starts a couple of months in advance of that. And Town staff work on what their legislative priorities are. The Select Board works on their legislative priorities, and it culminates somehow traditionally into a 40 to 45 article warrant, which is a document that gets posted in public, and the individual articles are items on the agenda or legislative items that will be considered, and only those items can be considered by Town Meeting because it's duly posted in advance and gives everyone the opportunity to research and understand what actions that will be considered by Town Meeting during those evenings.
Yeah, and we've been, I think, like the last three or four Town Meetings at this point, we've been doing our, like, leading up to Town Meeting, we've been doing weekly updates for Town Meeting members just to make sure we give them enough time to be the best informed that they can be when they get there. Usually Monday night at 7:00 PM at Oakmont.
Right, exactly.
I think one of the interesting parts, and we have one on this Town Meeting warrant or agenda, is the process for like citizens petitions.
Sure. Yes, you know, the initiative process here in Shrewsbury for Town Meeting and all municipalities across the Commonwealth is somewhat traditional and familiar to folks outside of New England. But it's just the hyper-local part of it. So for our annual Town Meeting, any citizens can bring forth questions of the legislative body, if it's within the legislative body's purview, to have them take action through an initiative petition. And it only takes 10 individuals signing that petition to bring something forth to Town Meeting. And this year, we have a article that's associated with the sale of water in plastic bottles. So that initiative itself is actually looking to prevent the sale of single-use plastic bottles that contain water.
But under one liter, correct?
Yeah, so under one liter. So they do call it single-use, and they are, the petitioners are defining it a single-use as any size container of a liter or less would be prohibited from sale in the community. Wouldn't necessarily prohibit someone from having it on their person or buying it in another town and bringing it in. But it is an environmentally focused initiative and looking from both a public health standpoint and the impacts of microplastics on people, and then the environmental considerations associated with litter and those bottles being found throughout the community in places that they shouldn't be in the environment.
Yeah, and we've seen a couple of these kind of come through over the years. We've had the Styrofoam, like polystyrene.
Yeah, polystyrene, right, the food containers.
And the plastic bags, so.
Yeah, both of those initiatives were successful.
They were both citizen petitions, too. I'm most unsure, before my time, but I'm 90% sure.
Right, yep.
So that's definitely one of the interesting things coming up. But you said that the 10 signatures are needed for citizens' petition, but that's only for annual Town Meeting, correct?
Yeah, so any special Town Meeting that's called, once it's called, you would need 100 signatures to get an initiative petition in front of a Town Meeting. And, you know, that makes sense in that folks are traditionally preparing for the annual Town Meeting, and it's a, not necessarily a fixed date.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the special Town Meeting requires, again, 100 registered voters to sign off and have an initiative placed in front of Town Meeting.
Awesome, and then let's talk about some of them. Like, we have a lot of our traditional articles, like we do, like you said, all the different budget articles that touch on any of our, like, the Water Enterprise Fund, those type, like the utility funds, like the general budget. But we also have some interesting, like, not traditional articles coming before Town Meeting this year.
Yeah, yeah, so in total, we have 44 articles. Again, somehow we always fall between 40 and 45, it seems like, since I've been here at least. And, yeah, there are a couple of interesting articles that are different. I'll talk really broadly first. We'll just talk about community preservation projects. This is becoming more of a traditional aspect. There are five different articles. One of them is the traditional funding, and then there's four different projects that are being sent forth by the Community Preservation Commission for consideration. It falls with primarily within the context of historic preservation and open space and recreation, which they're looking to spend some funding on or get authorization to spend funding on. The CPC does a really good job in holding public meetings and public hearings in the development of their proposals in advance of Town Meeting. They've also, of course, gone through that process with the Finance Committee and their public hearing process. So folks have had the opportunity on several occasions to engage and provide their feedback on these projects. And it's rather modest this year, I would say, in comparison. There's one large project, which is maybe more expensive than everyone would like, but it's the appropriate costs for the complete rehabilitation of Arrowwood Playground.
Yeah.
And it's a community playground. It's a, it's a really interesting initiative in that it was led primarily by a resident within the neighborhood. So we love the opportunity to engage in residence in direct, meaningful projects within the community, and this is certainly one of them where they have been the main voice and advocate for the CPC to consider funding and really making modernization improvements to the Arrowwood Playground.
It's awesome, right? We did like the design, I think, last Town Meeting, I believe. So it's just kind of like a continuation of the process with this project. And I know they're doing some historical document preservation initiatives. Again, super cool and might seem very niche to some people, but we have some really old documents. We're coming up on our 300th birthday in a couple of years, so it's important to keep all those records preserved properly.
That is right. Yeah, then a couple other park-based initiatives. One, making some ADA accessibility improvements at Prospect Park. And then a local match for the Jordan Pond multi-use trail design. And, you know, Jordan Pond is an area in the community where we're really looking to expand our recreational opportunities. It's a lot of town-owned land in that area, and we're looking for a trail that circumnavigates the pond. It's been a multi-year initiative, and this is the next step in the process to really design the full trail. And in the future, I would see additional incremental projects of constructing and building that out.
Super exciting, I think, too. And then another unique article, but we've also talked about this as a community in the past, which is the electronic voting, like bylaw adjustment, and also like a funding request to purchase voting clickers if approved, the change. That's been something that when we did our exit poll for the annual Town Meeting last year, and I feel like come up like in comments and feedback we've heard over the years, is it's just something that people are looking to see changed about the process, which I think is like helpful feedback, and I think kind of cool that we can, again, like we've always, what we always try to do, act on feedback we receive, same thing we did with the newsletter and this. And now we kind of get to see what happens with the electronic voting, too.
Yes, cities and towns, it was surprising in some of the research that has been done in our office. Cities and towns have been adopting electronic voting means at their Town Meetings for almost two decades at this point.
Oh my gosh.
And it was considered maybe six or seven years ago in Shrewsbury. There was a study committee that was done through the former moderator with Town Meeting members. The bylaw changes that we need to make to make this happen, our current bylaw says that the first instance of voting at Town Meeting will be done through a voice vote. So we're just looking to provide the opportunity at the discretion of the moderator and the members of Town Meeting to have the first instance of voting taken through electronic means as well. And so there's making those changes. And then there's a complimentary article that would actually put funding in place to acquire the electronic voting system. So Articles 40 and 41 would take those two different initiatives on. I think it's a great opportunity. We have Representative Town Meeting. Folks are elected to come and vote and participate, engage in the legislative process. That takes a lot of uncertainty about the number of devices that we need to buy and how they'll be utilized, and whether they'll be returned at the end of the evening and things like that, that a lot of other towns have faced that have these types of, have open Town Meeting. I've participated in open Town Meetings where electronic voting was used. And I think it's, it's really helpful to the process, you know, the standard process. Individuals will get issued voting devices, just a really simple, basic remote control with a yes, no. Maybe a submit, depending on the particular device that's used. And then it goes on the screen live, and you don't see individual votes live, but the moderator will call for a short duration of voting, relatively short, right? If you say 20 seconds, you're like, oh, I might not be able to make my decision in 20 seconds. But it's one of those things, if you sit.
You've probably been thinking about it probably until the vote's called, while people are asking questions.
But you see on the screen during that 20 second or whatever the window that's provided is, you can, you know, change your vote, yes, no, yes, no, no, and at the end, you're locked in at the end of the voting period. And it does show you live, just a simple pie chart, yeses and nos. And it gives you an interesting feel for what the rest of the room is thinking, if you are a little bit uncertain. That could push your vote one way or another, but it will speed up the process. I think it will take care of some of the procedural challenges that often can increase the time of a Town Meeting. I know when votes are hard to call by the moderator, you know, a voice vote of yeses and nos. If it's not really overwhelming, then people have rightly called for a standing vote for us to go around the room and actually count the yeses and nos. And this really takes care of that through the initial instance of voting.
Yeah.
It would still be an option if it was somehow needed, but clears that up right away and occurs within that short period of time and reduces the uncertainty.
Like, yeah, like the transparency, security of the process. I also feel like it's kind of touches on like an accessibility, like issue a little bit. Like, if people can't do a standing vote, like, don't want them to miss being counted. And, yeah, I think it just like caters to a lot of different abilities as well, so.
Agreed.
Been doing work in that area, too, so.
Yeah, and the price is really reasonable as well. We're talking an initial investment of around $11,000 and then an annual investment of about $900.
Right, and that's just like software stuff.
Upgrades to maintain the system, make sure it's well-functioning. We'd have sufficient number of devices if one isn't working. There'll be a test period at the beginning of every meeting. Again, I said, people have been doing this for almost two decades.
Yeah.
We're not on the leading edge.
Yeah, we have some good neighbors to ask questions to and things like that.
Yep.
We also have a couple of bylaw adjustments separate from electronic voting.
Yeah, a couple within the zoning bylaws, what we always do. The first one is really protecting the rights of landowners in town. As there's been a recent push, rightfully so, for us to find ways to expand sidewalks within the community. Oftentimes, that requires the public taking of land, so it falls within the town's right-of-way of the street that it's associated with. In some rare instances, when we would take someone's frontage, it may actually cut into the shape of their lot or the amount of frontage that they have.
So like their compliance a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, they're, it could eat into, as you said, the compliance, how far their home is set back from, from the public right-of-way. And it could actually make their structure non-conforming. But we, through this proactive approach, we would eliminate any uncertainty related to that. And that, any of those takings wouldn't negatively impact the official dimensions of the law.
Which I think is like a good comfort for something like that, just I feel like the uncertainty probably people had before. This kind of takes that away.
Correct, yeah. And then a much bigger matter that's being discussed across the Commonwealth is the state's rollout and implementation of new byright zoning that allows for accessory dwelling units on, in any residential district. And the state has already set the vast majority of parameters. Municipalities vary limited ability to influence or impact or change any of the rules associated with accessory dwelling units, but we have the opportunity to require special permits in certain situations. So we're taking that opportunity to have as much control and discretion as possible with the Planning Board for accessory dwelling units. We know it can be a contentious topic. These are small units. They can come in a variety of forms and fashions. It could be the completion of a basement or a second floor, or an addition to a home, or it could be a standalone unit. So we're documenting all that into our own zoning bylaws. Again, they're all in conformance with the state general laws, and we're quite limited in what we can change. But at least it's much clearer through our own documentation here in our own zoning bylaws of what's required and what homeowners have the opportunity to do with their properties.
Again, providing better clarity on things, and again, I think, feel like that's super helpful to the community that may want one, not want one, have one, whatever, whatever their adventure is.
Yeah, so then we have three general bylaw amendments. The first is a redo, unfortunately. This is associated with the construction of utility poles and overhead wires, and we would look for any new construction of overhead utilities or of utilities to all be underground and not be overhead. We did this last year. It was overwhelmingly supported by Town Meeting. The Attorney General's Office at the state found a flaw in the process that we used prior to Town Meeting. We required to hold a public hearing by the Planning Board. That wasn't done, so we have to start the process over again. We've gone through the Planning Board public hearing process, and now we're bringing it back to Town Meeting and asking for their support again. Sorry that we have to bring it back and have this warrant article, but that's the situation that we find ourselves in. The second amendment to the general bylaw, actually, would be the third, because we already talked about the electronic voting devices, would be maintenance of private ways. And this provides the town with an opportunity to make minor repairs and improvements to private roadways in the community for the purpose of public safety.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the general laws prohibit us from making investment in private land, of course, because we're public entity. And, but it does give us the opportunity, and we've taken advantage or had it in place since the 1950s, to provide winter maintenance of private ways. But this would be more structural improvements or pothole repairs or other similar repairs, but not paving them, not adding sidewalks, not adding drainage, just some maintenance to make sure that they're passable for not only winter maintenance operations, but public safety operations.
And I feel like, like, shout out to the Highway Division. They've been working on their winter repairs for the last couple of weeks, and that surprise April storm definitely put a, put another bump in the road. But I feel like it, like you said, kind of pairs nicely with the fact that we do winter maintenance on private ways. So then it allows us to, you know, fix the curb, fix the pothole, and just, again, kind of finish the loop on, on that process for us and the residents that live on private ways.
And it'll be a modest or minor investment in the grand scheme of things each year, made through the Highway Department budget. We're not requesting any specific additional dollars in FY '26 to do this, but maybe necessary in the future. But we'll be able to take a good, it'll be worthwhile to take a good inventory. Well, we have a good inventory. I'll say a good assessment of those private roadways and see where significant investments are needed and see what we can do, not only this summer, but in future years, once we're able to, after the bylaws are considered by the state.
Right.
And then finally, and actually happens to be the last warrant article on the agenda, is making some minor adjustments to the local wetlands protection bylaw that we put in place last year. And this would actually make. And this would actually make it less costly for the notification process for applicants.
Okay.
Uh, it'll allow us to continue to provide robust notification, but it will uh go through a process of. Registered mail and not certified mail, so we can track it, but we don't have to get signatures and sign off, it's just it it'll actually. Cut the cost substantially to notify all the abutters of of projects when they're necessary.
Certified mail, I haven't sent one in a little bit, but that can run up to like seven.
Yeah.
Seven, eight dollars, so if you have a hefty, a butter list.
Right.
Um, definitely helpful.
Expensive for the.
Also, yeah, you don't have to sign for it at the door, like if people aren't home, they get their.
Right. Right. So those are the bylaw adjustments, you know, one of, obviously, one of the key responsibilities of town meeting is maintaining our local uh. Laws and bylaws and those are the the various articles where we'll actually be taking direct action.
Yeah. Um, we also have, again, it kinda. It's just another part of our process as like a town with the land we're working on or. Will be asking town meeting to consider the land transfer to Selco.
Right.
Um, I think that property is like, I forgot what the number is, but on North Quinn Siggeman.
Right.
Avenue.
Yeah, so this, as you mentioned, town meeting controls the use of town or the designated use of town land. They, uh, town meeting controls the acquisition and disposition of town land, but then they can also set land aside for tic- per- for particular purposes.
Yeah.
And that particular purpose needs to be established before a property is is used for that, so in this instance, we are looking to. Transfer a piece of land on North Quinn Siggeman Avenue to the care, custody and control of Selco. For their construction of a new consolidated headquarters facility. Um, it will allow them to operate from a single site rather than three different areas, so to have field operations. Professional administrative and certain aspects of customer service on that location as well. Um, Selco's been looking to do this for a number of years, they're pursuing some private property, over the last few years, it didn't work itself out. This is about a five-acre parcel of land that is um in a good location for them to operate from. It's not in a residential area like their current operations facility is, so it will be easier. Uh, and more compatible for uh use. Uh, in this new location than it is right in the heart of a residential neighborhood adjacent to an elementary school.
Right, I was just gonna say across from the field.
Correct, right.
Um, and this is solely Selco's project, I know we're not asking town meeting about like the physical building. Of the project, but I know that can kinda be confusing. Um, with knowing that that's going on and also doing this land transfer, but.
Right.
It's solely Selco's project and um. Not what we're asking town meeting about um or would, correct?
Well, there, I mean, it could, yeah, so it de- it depends how Selco pursues pursues this and I know they're looking at using cash that they have on hand and. Um, then ultimately it'll be paid through the rates for the cable or excuse me, the the internet rates, uh, the broadband rates. And the electricity rates, so um, Selco has the opportunity to borrow funding through the traditional town meeting process like.
Like the.
Like any other capital improvement, um, it wouldn't be a borrowing, it wouldn't be a debt exclusion.
Right.
Because it's not gonna hit the tax bills, it's gonna hit the utility bills. But they don't have to do that, they have the ability to borrow through other um consortium. Groups that they belong to and it traditionally, it just comes down to what is the best value, where can they likely get the lowest interest rate? Is it with the town's triple A bond rating with our kinda backing through the traditional traditional town process or is it? Uh, an alternative and whatever the lowest cost.
Right, whatever is best.
That's what they're gonna pursue, so that's a couple of years from now, they're just, one, looking to. Not invest any money till they know that they'd be able to use this site, so step one, and they're engaging with um consulting engineers. And to start the design process and really see if the project is feasible and cost-effective from this point forward.
Awesome, very interesting.
And I think probably the final non-traditional article is associated with establishing a school building committee. So we, from time to time, establish school building committees to pursue major. Uh, construction and renovation projects for education facilities within the community, town meeting has been the traditional authority in establishing that building committee. Um, the composition of the committee is defined through the Massachusetts School Building Authority process, but having town meeting vote. Um, not only puts it on town meeting's radar, it gets their affirmation at the start of the project, you know, and and lets them know that we're looking to pursue. An investment, this time it's uh for the expansion. Uh, and renovation of the Shrewsbury High School and uh this is the very beginning of the of the process, we are asking for. Uh, I think thirty-five thousand dollars to provide a little bit of funds for the committee to use. Maybe towards the end of this preliminary phase of work, because we have to identify initial cost estimate for. Architect and engineering services to get a schematic design.
Right.
But otherwise, this is really the establishment of of the committee is the heart of this article and would allow a a group of residents to go out. Work on uh the feasibility for a project, determine if it's necessary. And then come back to town meeting, um, at least annually and make reports on the progress of that work.
Yeah, and um, I listened a little bit to the Finance Committee, like public hearings on this article, like. What does this process look like going forward, what it, what are we committed to, what are we not committed to as a town? Um, by, you know, setting up the. The building committee.
So, not committing to a whole lot at this point, really just committing uh to the establishing the committee. Having um, the select board make some appointments and the school committee make some appointments, the state requires some individuals like the superintendent. Myself and the principal of the schools to be on the building committee. And then again, the the little bit of the thirty-five thousand dollars in funding that we really be using as as seed funding, you may not spend any of it. Um, from this point forward, this fall, we'd be coming to uh town meeting and looking for. Initial feasibility design, that would probably be um a couple million dollars. I don't have a specific number, because we're really gonna move forward over the course of the next six months or so to define the scope of work that's needed. But this project, we're we're really at the outset of about um six-year project, we have probably five years. Left or so in a traditional timeline, it could be six years from this point if it slows down for any reason. Um, if we would continue to move forward, we're looking at a project that would open sometime around the twenty thirty-one's, you know, school year.
That's a fake year, you can't say that out loud.
It won't get here before we all know it, but it's certainly not right around the corner, so. Yeah, I mean, real commitments for a project like this won't happen for at least another two or two and a half years and that's when funding for actual construction.
Yeah.
Would would be, and this whole process is uh contingent upon the state's participation. They do provide, we're very fortunate, uh, you know, a grant maximum reimbursement rate of about fifty-two percent.
Yeah.
Percent for Shrewsbury and on a project like this, that could mean millions of dollars in um contributions from the state.
Right, and again, this kinda came up a lot at the um, the special town meeting in April, just like. With the DPW Town Hall project kind of, you know, in in the mix now. And we have the Shrewsbury High School kind of early in that process, there's actually like physically a lot of time.
Yeah.
Between those two projects, so when there people might see a finance or would see a financial impact or. Again, kinda like planning it in the grand scheme of um how we wanna take care of our like infrastructure and facilities in town.
Yeah, it's something we're really uh aware of and sensitive to as we went through the Beal Elementary School Project and the Police Station Project. Those projects were really kinda back-to-back and had year-over-year attacks impacts. And the select board over the course of the last eighteen months has taken the time to plan out the major capital investments that that are needed. They sped up the municipal facilities optimization project. The need has always been there, but you know, they kinda short-cycled the planning and the preliminary design to make sure that there'll be at least a. Three-year gap between the tax bill impacts of the facilities optimization project, which will hit in January twenty twenty-seven. And this project, which wouldn't hit tax bills until January twenty thirty.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there there is really good spacing. As we talked about earlier, during that time, debt service will be rolling off the books and, you know, we'll be paying less and less interest each and every year. So that spacing will also mitigate, rather than just add to the amount of debt service uh that the community takes on. You know, when that new project comes to fruition.
Yeah, and I think it's also important that like acknowledging that like the conversation about like the capital planning of. Facilities and whatnot didn't just happen in a municipal vacuum, like those conversations involve the schools and so we kinda both know. Um, what's going on and like where we each see needs and I think it was like, just like a good testament of. The school committee and select boards like collaboration to kind of put this together to some degree to. Leave those gaps between projects to try and minimize any impacts to the residents.
Yeah, the municipal facilities optimization project, the town hall part of it, which is about ten percent of the total project cost. Um, has significant um consideration for the central administration office for the school district. It allows them to consolidate their staff, uh, central staff into a single location, they're currently two, well, three different locations, but mainly two locations, the town hall. And Parker Road and this will allow them to all be located at the town hall, because. We'll be moving the DPW staff out of the town hall facility and down to uh South Street, so it really is an optimization and I think. From the twenty nineteen estimates of what we'd need in addition for the town hall, that was around sixteen to twenty million dollars. And we've optimized that project, bringing forth uh four-point-four million dollar investment that's required in the town hall. Because we've paired it with this DPW project.
Yeah, lots of good planning and thinking and thoughtful process that led us here. Um, any last thoughts on the town meeting, warrant, annual town meeting, May nineteenth, AKA Spring Super Bowl?
No, I mean, I just look forward to town meeting, every opportunity that we have to engage in that process and. Um, come back to town meeting with the work that we've done over the last six to eight months and. Uh, share our plans and ask for their engagement. Always look forward to the questions that individuals have to make sure that we can settle anything out that hasn't been brought up over the last three or four months, if we've worked through the various iterations. Of the warrant and public hearings and um always look for favorable outcomes and. But respect the will of town meeting and its role as our legislative body and. Look forward to to seeing the outcomes that we get.
Yeah, that's very cool, watch, like, watching, cause I'm sitting. By the projector, but um, you can really see all the work that went in, both on. The town's end, but also town meeting members' ends, with the questions they bring to the table and um. I've just enjoyed a lot the last couple of years, just watching that that kind of unfold and I think you've said this before, just it's really is like direct democracy.
It is.
Kind of in action and I think that is one of the coolest things about um. New England, specifically Massachusetts form of government, so.
Completely agree. Well, Taylor, this has been another great episode of the Tom Andrew Download.
The best episode.
Just remind everyone, if you have any question or comment, you can always reach out to Taylor and I at TMdownload@shrewsburyma.gov. That's TMdownload@shrewsburyma.gov, so on behalf of Taylor Galusha, I'm Kevin Mizikar, thank you for listening.